Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska government bodies. The city of Seward buys for the Nebraska opening and active business. It copies the Nebraska openings act, it's played on the north wall of this meeting facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording process is posted in the meeting room. The participant's sign-in sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Residents shall approach the podium, state their name and address for the clerk's record, and are asked to limit remarks for five minutes. All remarks should be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary, and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the rule.
Welcome back, your Cameron Fritz.
Here.
Miller Singleton Schmidt.
Here.
Hands.
Here.
First item this evening is the consideration of approval of draft minutes of August 7, 2018. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Sing none, please register your votes, please display the votes. Items two through seven are the consent agenda.
Yes, question? Just from a curiosity's sake here on our code violation report, there's multiple items that say they have been deferred to our attorney. Are we, are we working these, or if we're not gonna do anything to get them back in the hands of police department or whoever is following up on these things?
The follow-up I would note is after our conversation initiated by Councilman Singleton, when we reevaluated our process and procedure of what we did, we had Ed come in and talk about them. What we noted for some of the older ones is that we wanted to restart all of those to ensure that the code violation still exists, to provide accurate information. We conferred with the county attorney's office as our contracted prosecuting city attorney, and they did confirm that they would prosecute those for us under our current contract with them. And so negotiations, and they said, go ahead and give notices now, let everybody know what their violations are, and then they're just going up the ladder and they're prosecuting them now. So, that's, that's the procedure now. So, the one thing we noted was, I mean, it's hard to prosecute cases when your evidence and facts may be from 2014.
I just didn't want it to be something that's been sent off to attorneys taking care of, and it's been carried versus our folks staying on top of it.
We verified with the county attorney's office that they will prosecute our code violations for property maintenance codes and things like that.
Can we call it thick hands? You have the motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Sing none, please register your votes, please display the votes. Item number eight, this is the confirmation of the mayor's appointment. We have the appointments in the office for appointment, appointment, this is Nicholas Wolfe for the position of finance director and treasurer that I am appointing this evening. Any questions or comments, or is someone like to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Sorry.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Sing none, please register your votes, please display the votes.
We'll issue the oath of office to Nick Wolfe. I Nicholas Wolfe solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Nebraska, and the ordinances of the City of Seward, Nebraska, against all enemies foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, that I take this obligation freely and without mental reservation or for purpose of evasion, that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the Office of Finance Director/Treasurer of the City of Seward, Nebraska, according to law and to the best of my ability. And I do further swear that I do not advocate, nor am I a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or violence, and that during such time as I am in this position, I will not advocate nor become a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or violence.
Thank you very much.
Nick, did you want to say anything to the council here and the world that's watching?
I guess, not a whole lot this evening, but I'm just, I'm really excited to be aboard and, and excited to get started. Here in a couple of weeks will be my first day, and, and I'll get down to business and, and kinda see, see where I can help out, and, and I look forward to working with you.
We're very glad to have you. Did you want to say a few things about your background maybe?
Sure, absolutely. So, my, majority of my experience is in the public accounting field. So, I worked for a public accounting firm in Lincoln. We did primarily governmental and nonprofit audits. And so, a lot of my experience is revolves around auditing in governmental entities, especially with regard to cities, school districts, and, and other governmental entities. But, I, I grew up in Lincoln, and my wife Kaylee joined, is joining me tonight, and she's really excited about this as well. And went to school at UNL and got my undergrad degree there, and got my master's degree at UNO in, in accounting, and, and I guess the rest is history, so here we are.
Well, thank you, and welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Item number nine, this is a consideration of a request by Seward County for the use of city-owned property adjacent to bridge for wetland mitigation site for replacement of Second Street Bridge over the Big Blue River. Greg.
We met with engineering firms representing Seward County in regards to the replacement of the Second Street Bridge project that they've been working on for years. This is a very long-term project, involves federal funding, and now they're kind of on the cusp of putting that into implementation. And part of that project is the need for wetland mitigation land to offset some of the work that will be done within, under the bridge and thereabout. And so, tonight we have representatives from Speace Lewis, who will put on a little short presentation hopefully, inform you on, on what those requirements and needs are. I think some of the information is in your packet. And then, it would be appropriate to consider authorization for, for that property for the use of wetland mitigation. Gentlemen?
I'm Tim Farmer from Speace Lewis Engineers. We're at 906 South 26th Street in Lincoln, Nebraska. With me is John Dolson, who's our hydraulics engineer, and the engineer responsible for permitting for these types of projects. As mentioned, this project's been going on since 1992. It was one of his first program. It's a federal aid project, where the federal government will provide 85% of the funding. State provides 10, and then local, Seward County will pick up the other 5%. Project consists of removing the bridge on South Second Street and replacing with a five-span, hundred-and, correct, I forgot, 60-foot bridge? Under 60-foot bridge, new bridge. The impacts that that new construction caused were over a tenth of an acre of wetlands adjacent to the site, and that requires mitigation by the Corps of Engineers. The Corps requires you to mitigate, and John can talk to the ratios a little better, I believe, two to one?
We have a couple of different kinds of wetland types. Most of them are two-to-one ratios, there's a forest and wetland, that is a four-to-one ratio. That's kind of where our numbers are, kind of what we need for mitigation site.
To go along with it, not only needing to create that much wetlands, you also have to create a 50-foot buffer around the entire wetland. That's another core requirement, and that just eats up more land. So, we're looking for a place to do that, the property immediately adjacent to the bridge on the south side and west of the road. Wind it itself well to an area that could be flooded by the blue when the blue's up, and create a wetland. Our proposal is to use that area to satisfy the Corps of Engineers so this project can move forward. Any questions of us?
Does council have any questions or comments on this item?
I'll just add some follow-up. Your property that they're looking at is property that was acquired by the city pursuant to FEMA buyout. And so, it has very specific uses that we can even do, with a little on its own the flood plain, but beyond that. We did have a title search done and did concur that wetland mitigation is an explicit use of that property that is allowed directly in, in the conditions of the sale to the city through the FEMA buyout process. So, this is a good use of it, meets the requirements of FEMA that allowed us to part of the property in the first place. The only thing we note is, if you're familiar, this is kind of the area where we've staged construction dirt, things like that in the past. And we'll just, I mean, I think Mel's been moving on that already, and applying a lot of that back into the horseshoe where it's contained. And we can secure it inside the fence system, and so, we'll just continue to remove that out of there, apply it to projects and things like that.
Yes, Chris? Just curiosity, what's been hold up since 1992?
Believe it or not, it's not the oldest project that we have been working on with the State Department of Transportation that was programmed with federal aid.
I mean, were we waiting on the state, or were we waiting on federal funds?
We were waiting on the state to prioritize it. They have so much money they spend each year on federal projects. Throughout the course of history, they've changed the processes numerous times and have failed to spend that amount of money even a few times. So, it bubbled up to the top about 2005 and '06, and I thought it was gonna get built then. And then, they went through a major staff change at the local projects section at the Department of Transportation, and it got shelved, and it floundered since then.
Thank you. Any other questions or finger pointing?
Just curious, you know, they have some projects that are out there, I just wanna get a timeline in my head if they'll ever get done in my lifetime.
Any other discussion? Or someone like to make a motion?
Move through.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Sing none, please register your votes, please display the votes. Item number 10, consideration for approval of updated job description for library assistant two. Bonnie, do you want to take that?
Megan Boggs has submitted her resignation from the city, from the library. She's gonna work part-time here for the next couple of months. So, we're advertising for that full-time position, and we cleaned up the job description, and major changes are just on any of the computer programs that are used in that job, other than that there really weren't any, any other major changes.
Any questions or comments on the job description?
Move it for, second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Sing none, please register your votes, please display the votes. Item 11, acknowledged receipt of airport authority resolution requesting levy authority for 1819.
Yes, this is the, kind of the standard operating procedure that we get notice of the requests by the airport authority every year. They will finalize their budget then from that. So, we have that here tonight. General, they know their general fund and bond funds in their request. Pursuant to our review, their levy amount will stay the same as it's been since 2014. So, they're asking for the same levy amount that they were at before, so they're not adjusting.
I will note that when the resolution was put together and they wrote it on it, we didn't have the final valuation from the county yet. So, the total levy, the amount won't, how is it, the levy doesn't change, but those numbers will be adjusted slightly.
Any questions or comments on item number 11? Now, someone like to make a motion?
So move.
Sorry. We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Sing none, please register your votes, please display the votes. Now, number 12, consideration of ordinance approving the comprehensive pay plan, changing the title from accountant, budget administrator to finance director slash treasurer. Bonnie, did you want to take that?
Couple of years ago, when we did that job description, it was titled differently, and then the council approved the change in the job description, prior to us advertising for it, and we just need to correct that title in the title, that's all it is. No change in dollar amounts or anything, just the title.
Well, this is one's an ordinance, someone like to introduce it?
Yes, please.
Okay. An ordinance to provide for classification of officers and employees of the City of Seward, Nebraska, to change the title from accountant, budget administrator to finance director, treasurer, to provide for longevity pay and payment of part-time employees, to provide for dates such classification and pay ranges of comprehen, of compensation shall become effective, to provide for publication in pamphlet form, to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance, I'm sorry, yes, it's ordinance number 2018-17, and the title is hereby approved, and any motion to suspend the statutory rule?
So move.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Yes?
Is this for Mr. Wolfe's position? I'm just verifying, just verifying.
Again, this is ordinance number 2018-17. Nice, go to step, where am I at?
We're dispensing with the rules.
Stay on dispensing rules.
We have a motion and a second. Yes, any further discussion? Sing none. Ask them to please register your votes. Please display the votes. The ordinance. It's like a teleprompter, I'm just reading what's in front of me. Is this ordinance number 2018-17? Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
So move.
Is there any further discussion? There's none. The question is, your ordinance number 2018-17 be finally passed and adopted, please register your vote, please display the votes. And this is the only ordinance this evening, so only one final motion to make it a part of the permanent record.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second, please register your votes. Please display the votes. Item 13, consideration for approval of an agreement with Constellation New Energy Gas Division LLC for a set rate for natural gas for a two-year period. Greg?
Yeah, this is a follow-up. This was on our agenda two weeks ago, and it was requested by Councilman Schmidt that we go back and look at contacting Black Hills Energy to see if they would be able to offer us a fixed rate, utility rate for gas wholesale purchase over the next two years or any period for that matter. I did contact Cheryl Brandonberg, who's our main contact with Black Hills Energy. She got her staff online for a phone conference last week, and they did inform me on the commercial side, they do not offer a fixed rate term for anyone. You may have seen recently, even in the Journal Star, that they're offering a fixed rate term for residential. But they do not offer it on the commercial side. Essentially, what they do is they have, they have purchased from the same wholesale people we do when we're talking about Constellation. They go out and buy it from a number of different providers on different contracts, and they hedge and do all kinds of different things to try and make up their, their total portfolio of wholesale gas, and then they pass it through. They don't add anything to it on the wholesale side, and they just pass it through. That's why it's variable all the time for your commercial side, and we see that in our billing. And so, they said at this time they, they don't offer that product, and so, we wouldn't be able to do it. We'd have to go out and start doing negotiations, and we're probably way past time to put out RFP or do something like that, to go try to solicit that. So, what you have here then is still a recommendation or consideration of an agreement with Constellation, who we've had for almost a decade. We've been purchasing wholesale gas from a number of our facilities, Wastewater, Senior Center, Civic Center. And so, they put a wholesale fixed rate in here. I provided again the comparisons to their previous rates, where they were averaging anywhere from, I think their average was 61 cents for the last two years, to they're giving us a fixed rate at 48 cents for the next two years, significantly lower than what we paid them the last two years, so.
Chris? I'm just trying to understand, literally, last meeting was the first time I ever heard Constellation, and as far as, they're providing it to the city alone?
No.
For all of our buildings in the city, or?
Four, four of the buildings listed on the contract. The four addresses listed there, so the Civic Center, the Wastewater Plant, Senior Center, and then might be the 616 Brad, that's Civic Center. Manor Drive is Senior Center, South Columbia is the Wastewater Plant, and 222 North Third.
That's Fire.
Fire.
Fire, that's the fourth one. So, those four only. So, not City Hall, not Electric Department, not this building. This was, in doing my minimal history on this one, it's just one, I couldn't track down a ton of information. This dates back to four prior administrators. I don't know if, prior administrators didn't have time to look into it, try and figure out where it was again.
Well, there's the biggest concern.
So, I mean, we're approving it every month on the claims, that's who Constellation is.
This is a two-year contract?
A two-year contract fixed rate.
It'd be an opportunity to revisit this if you wanted to look at.
Because what you could look at is, I mean, the problem is you gotta be way ahead of the curve on this. And again, I'm behind on it too, because it shows up days before it's due, and they ask, hey, you want to re-sign? And so, I wish I would have more time put into it, to go out and look at it, and I mean, I had to figure out what it was first, I'll be brutally honest. But, again, we're gonna save, I mean, just apples to apples, what we paid them the last two years, what we'll pay them the upcoming two years.
I realize that, I'm, I'm looking more as to Black Hills and someone who I see as have been a partner with the city on things we do. And to be honest, from 48 cents versus current rate, looking at June at 45 cents, we can get just as good a rate from Black Hills. The, the question is more comes from a logistics standpoint. We don't approve this, and we say we're gonna go to Black Hills, I assume nothing changes except where the bill comes from.
That's correct.
It comes from the same pipe, it'd just be a different source.
And then, you also take the risk of Black Hills going up over 48.
Because the actual, I mean, if you're gonna.
Because I have months in here where they're over 48 in your information.
Typically, you look at the colder months is where it is.
Right, February 2018 was 48, everything else has been below, all the way back to November 2016. So, but I don't know what the gas market is today.
Yeah, John?
It's like, it is a long discussion, it was kind of similar with Chris's years ago, but the only thing is, is residents might benefit commercial well, because the residents can get locked-in rate where the commercial can't, like big businesses like Hughes Brothers tend to come. I know that's a fact, but I, I agree with Chris that Black Hills is the main supplier of the line and the equipment, and the benefit can come whenever we need support. Black Hills has the energy, or the, we say, the equipment locally to support if we would need them, but Constellation would not.
All of the equipment to do everything is handled by Black Hills.
I know.
What you're talking about is not apples to apples.
Well, that's what I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to.
You may be sending the same money, when you send it to Black Hills to Constellation, it just comes on the Black Hills bill. All the wheeling cost, all the extra fees, everything else that you see on a, we still get charged by Black Hills for these facilities. I get a Black Hills bill, it's just the wholesale purchase price is zero. All the other fees, everything else that goes with it.
If you think of it just like electricity, it can come from different sources, it's just going on the same line. And so, you still pay MPPD or us, and we pay MPPD, but they're getting it from a coal plant over here, a nuclear plant over there, and the wind over there, so all this is just coming through. So, if there's an issue with the infrastructure, that would still be Black Hills' responsibility. So, there wouldn't be like a, a mobilization issue or anything like that.
So, basically, they're using their line like, like we were told years ago, but they're still gonna charge it because they're in control of that line. But it's still coming from a different firm.
And the gas they're sending us comes from, they bill us for comes from a different firm, like they said.
The reality, they could be getting their gas from Constellation too, we don't know that.
It's just how they negotiated their wholesale purchase of it over time, and obviously, they purchased massive amounts, so.
Is there any cost to switching?
I don't believe so.
Any other questions or comments on item 13? Yeah, John?
Do we go and ask Constellation and Black Hills, for the residents alone, what their lock-in fees would be?
I didn't ask anything about residents, because it has nothing.
Because, I mean, that's where.
This is not for residents, and I also don't control residential billing for gas.
Right, but you were just saying, you know, before, that the big businesses aren't gonna get a benefit, but residents would, possibly.
Just those four buildings.
These four buildings.
Okay, so we're not, no, nothing's gonna benefit the.
No one else, it just are.
We're gonna benefit by hedging, that we're gonna lock in our gas purchase for the next two years at 48 cents for two years, 48 cents a therm.
And it is a gamble, because the, the market otherwise could be less than that, could be more than that, but from a budgeting standpoint, we know exactly what it's going to be.
We know it's also a savings over what you guys paid them over the last two years significantly.
So, residential will be by Black Hills?
Yes.
So, it's just these four and Constellation?
Because they're commercial, they're considered commercial, not residential.
And that's the, I mean, that's, so, you know, I'll, I want us to dig into this before this contract begins again. Like I say, Black Hills is an active participant, I feel, in our community, from an economic development side and everything else. And so, I, while I want to be prudent with our dollars, I, I can, I can agree with the fact that locking in the 48 cents per therm over two years, we know what we're gonna pay, and that's a good thing. But at the same point in time, those who assist in our community and help with our community, I like to throw our business at them in the same manner, because they, they take a stake in our community and what's going on. So, that being said, I'll move to approve this.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Sing none, please register your votes, please display the votes. Item 14, this is consideration of a resolution approving the loan between the City of Seward Electric Fund and the General Fund for Rail Campus Real Estate Purchase. This is payoff for the loan at Union Bank. Greg, do you want to talk about this?
Yeah, just cleaning up, as you'll get your budget, documents have been sent out to you, that will have our work session next Tuesday, that we were scheduled for. And then, our public hearing is anticipated for September 4th to finalize the budget barring any changes that you make. We've been working with our auditors, who we also contract with, to get a budget assistance, fill out our forms, to go to audit the state auditor's office and everything else as we approve and pass our budget. The one thing they noted was on our transfer from the Electric Fund to pay off the rail campus property purchase, they noted that they would like to see that as a loan with a loan document, to put it back into the Electrical Fund over time under the terms as you see fit. We noted it was contrary to what we had been told previously and what this body's done previously, but that was their recommendation, and me and Bonnie had a long, numerous conversations with them, but that was their recommendation. And so.
But we weren't planning on paying it back.
I understand that. That's exactly what, we had specifically asked if we prepared the budget, and we had budget discussions here last September. We noted that that was our plan going into it.
Do we need another document for giving the loan?
What?
Do we need a second document for giving the loan? So, that's the paperwork that they want. They want to show the loan and show it forgiven?
Oh, okay, that's right, it's a loan and then just a forgiven loan.
No, no, no.
We have to pay it back. Shown at zero percent interest, right? So, eventually, now we have to include in this coming budget a way to pay this back over, how many, two years, three years?
Two years at zero percent, but, I mean, you guys control both ends of the transaction, and so. Two years at zero percent, but I mean, you guys control both ends of the transaction, and so if you wanna extend it, you can extend it as you see fit. It comes down to a discussion of what is surplus funds? Cause surplus funds are what you use to transfer to the General Funds, there's an explicit state statute for it. And that's what me and Bonnie talked to the auditors about, and our budget recommendations when we built up the Rail Campus plan at the beginning of last year's budget. And we're, I'm just relatively confused on how our reserve funds and the Electric Fund are not surplus funds. Because the only way you build those funds up is your revenues exceeding your expenses, which is surplus.
And who's telling us that we have to do it without them?
Our auditors.
Who recommended the transfer?
Yes.
They, they didn't recommend this transfer, they, we contacted them and said, can we do this, and it was our understanding that was not a problem.
I thought we had done it the year before. Two years.
Two years before, before my even arrival, you did four hundred thousand, correct?
And that was okay?
We brought that up.
And that was okay?
Yes.
Why, why is it different?
I, they just said, Bonnie had more of this conversation than I did, and I'm not trying to.
Can we get another opinion?
Yeah, exactly, I'm with them.
I, I'm confused here, this is crazy.
This is just recommended that we do this, right?
Yeah, you don't, the problem is, is your budget as we propose it shows it as this, correct? Cause the other thing is, you can approve this tonight, and then call them in and say, you need to explain this to us. Cause ultimately, you don't control both ends of this transaction anyways, and you can just void this contract, or, I mean, this agreement. Cause you're on both ends of both of this transaction, this is basically a logistical paperwork item. And so if we can convince them that pursuant to, I mean, I have the state statute that allows surplus funds to go to the General Fund.
What date does that new finance director start?
Two weeks.
September fourth.
Is he able to give us an opinion on that?
Right now, it doesn't work for us, but on September fourth, we can have him work it out.
I could contact Mr. Galloway and ask him to provide more information as to why are we ready to do it two years ago and we can't do it now?
Exactly what I wanna know.
Maybe you can only do it once so often, that wasn't my understanding, but I don't have any more detail on it than that.
Do we have to prove this tonight?
We need to put something in the budget.
We can take a backup.
You can just void it. I mean, it's your contract, you're on both ends of it, I mean, you can just void it and move it out. This is just to provide paperwork that notes that those funds should be repaid at, that on the terms given, you can extend the terms, you can.
Why don't you agree with yourself?
Yeah, as long as you agree with yourself.
I agree with myself, but we don't need to do this. So, I mean, that's where, I mean, you're asking, I have a hard time saying yes to something, and you're telling me in the end, it doesn't really matter anyway, because you can go hump, hump and get rid of it. So I need you, or I need an auditor telling me, you don't have a choice, you have to do this from a paperwork standpoint.
It, it will show as a negative four hundred and eighty thousand to your General Fund if we don't do this. I mean, it will reduce your cash balance by that amount, and when you, when you look at those numbers, if that's how you want it to look.
But we're showing a transfer out of.
Electric.
Electric into the General Fund, so why would it show as a negative?
Well, I mean, those are two different funds.
I understand that, so explain to me how we get the four hundred. Because we didn't do an agreement, we didn't do a loan, you know, if you can explain all that, then I can have an easier time maybe saying yes to this at this point.
Back at that point, I know that was when Mr. Galloway was saying we were not the best cash position, and that was his recommendation to do that.
I'm not disagreeing, that's exactly what he said, but we did it without a loan approval. So I need somebody to explain to me why that one was okay versus doing this one before, I'm gonna vote yes on this to do this. Because I wanna know what was wrong, what was the difference between the last one, cause it seems like extra work to, that's already been done, to put together a loan. That's something in the end, we're gonna say we're not gonna pay back anyway. So, yeah.
If it is a deed to a loan, do we have to pay it back?
Right.
Or, I mean, if he comes back and shows us proof that it has to be a loan, and we have to in some fashion pay it back, then we have to figure out a way to pay it back.
Right, and right now, the way it's written up is we're paying it back over a two-year term, maybe that's not the best answer.
That's a chunk of money every.
Exactly.
Well, the plan was not to pay, and it was gonna be a balloon payment in two years.
That one, Chris, I don't like.
We're just, there's too many questions, things are missing. Do you have Kelly?
Gotta move the table.
You want to table this item, Chris?
Yes.
Do you want to second this one?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to table item thirteen, please register your votes, please display the votes.
What are you, kind of looking back, Chris, no more singing, motion, hands, motion.
Item fifteen, this is consideration for awarding twenty eighteen downtown revitalization program, this is CDVG seventeen DTR dash one oh seven, these are forgivable loans. Greg, did you want to give some brief background on these?
Yes, as you know, you set up the guidelines for the downtown revitalization forgivable loan program grant. That was given to us by DED, CDVG grant. Applications were set up and due on July twentieth, two thousand and eighteen. As soon as those came in, we did an initial review of those documents, Jonathan Jenkins and myself, and we sat down and ensured. One, all the documents were there, so they signed all the citizenship forms and everything else, so we had all those. We made sure their math was correct, cause this is very math intensive in regards to both weighing. And weighting in order of which ones would qualify, because we knew immediately off the bat, we had more ask than we had money to give out. We also just ensured that if there was any items missing in regards to their request, or items that we thought may not even qualify, that we followed up on those. And then, in the meantime, they were also getting, if they were doing anything that was involved in code compliance, they also received a separate document, which was a code inspection. From Ed Gonzalez, he generated a specific report for DED that cited every single code violation that they were gonna remedy, and whether it was or not in code conformity. What the citation was to our current codes, cause that would be required by DED. We went through all those things, and once we gathered all that information, had it put together, we put it into a similar spreadsheet as the one I'm handing out to you now. That you'll get to see for tonight. We did not disclose in any of our communications with applicants or anyone else, DTR, the LBA forty committee. We did not disclose what the numbers were after we reviewed them, because we wanted to make sure that we weren't giving anybody an unfair advantage. There's one of those for you, Mayor. And then we put it into a spreadsheet similar to the one you see here, in order of the percentage match, which is the hierarchy that you set. So the people that were putting the most into their projects versus the minimum fifty-fifty match, say they were putting in sixty percent and asking for forty percent, they were gonna be weighted higher than other projects. So we put it in that order, and ultimately took it to the LBA forty committee, they reviewed the projects, only one project was eliminated initially, and that was the request by, well, the same neutral grounds. Their initial, when they went in and initially did their two quotes, their project was over four thousand dollars, I believe. They found out from their contractor that their four thousand dollar quote was like not accurate to what they had really wanted. They were like, we just wanna replace four windows, that's it, and they went, oh, here's your new quote, the new quote came in below two thousand dollars. Well, you have to request at least a thousand dollars by the guidelines, and so they fell below that threshold, they couldn't even do fifty-fifty, they hit a thousand, and so they were disqualified. And so they were the only one that was denied, everyone else met the minimum qualifications, we took it on to the DTR committee, being LBA forty. LBA forty went through all the projects that we had listed for you here today. They reviewed those, and they did approve all of them for their percentage map, so that the percentages and the bids and everything added up to the percentages shown in the order they're in. And that everything they listed that we noted for those prices were qualifying costs. And so they went through all the projects and qualified them all. We had a total at that time, I believe, of approximately three hundred and eighty thousand total ask, with three hundred and seven thousand dollars we can distribute in CDVG funds. After we take out our administrative and construction management costs, we have three hundred and seven thousand dollars to give out. And so we had about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars in asks, and at that time, the LBA forty committee, our chair is here with us tonight, which is Councilman Beck, so she can also speak to this. And also by the direction of the mayor, the mayor originally always had the intent that by having LBA forty be the reviewing committee for the DTR applications. That that would give them the opportunity to reach out to basically non-qualifying DTR applicants and say, hey, please look at LBA forty, you might be able to take applications. And supplement the fact that you weren't able to secure DTR funds. And so they requested, after we provided them some information, that we go and contact, well, ultimately ended up being four businesses, one of them which was Neutral Grounds, which did not qualify, but three other ones. And look to provide LBA forty dollars for those four projects. And by providing LBA forty dollars for those four projects, that secured all the other projects that fell below the three hundred and seven thousand dollars. And so those would be the projects you see listed towards the bottom, Denzalagi Real Estate, Cash five one, five ten LLC, and then et cetera. Those would be projects that could not qualify for LBA forty, and they also would not have got DTR because their match percentages were lower than everyone else, and we would have ran out of funds. We did contact those four businesses, they were Bottle Rocket Brewing, Kirby Roth Insurance, and then La Casina. The new restaurant that's coming into downtown Seward, and then Neutral Grounds as I stated before. By qualifying their projects over to LBA forty, each one of them turned in an LBA forty application, filled them out, and were successfully awarded last Wednesday by the LBA forty committee. Their projects, at which time they withdrew their DTRs, that allowed the bottom ones to move up into qualifying for funding. And long story short there, basically, we have solved the fact that now, if these are approved tonight, we will have funded every single application that came in. I know that was a long ways to get to that, but that's ultimately what happened. And so as I stated before, all of them other than the Neutral Grounds were qualifying projects, even the Neutral Grounds ones, the work that they're doing is facade work, it's window frontage. And so everybody came in and had projects that were qualifying, good projects, and it was the intent of, I believe, LBA forty to try to get as much leverage and projects done in downtown as we could. And so that's ultimately where we bring you tonight, so answer any initial questions.
Other comments?
Elson murder properties, that particular project was withdrawn because their plans did not go through.
Yes, sorry.
So that one is just, oh, completely, it's not LBA forty or anything.
Are there questions or comments on any of these items?
I just wanna say, I was happy with what's, LBA forty did in getting all the projects done, and that we could help everyone who applied, I think that was a good use of LBA forty dollars and a good direction to go. The other part of this, that's actually quite exciting about at least the DTR side, I don't know if you're holding the LBA forty folks to the same standard, but.
Yes, it's the exact same.
So November nineteen is when the projects have to be completed?
Well, yeah, we'll put together, it will be a, just the same one, it'll be a five-year forgivable loan, they just need to keep the improvement there for five years. You don't have to create jobs or do anything else, we'll do loan agreements with them, they'll have to do them by the same timeline. The only thing they'll be missing is they won't, we're not gonna pay somebody to do Davis Bacon research and all that stuff, but all the other general terms, they'll have to use their same percentage matches they asked for. They don't get a special deal by doing LBA forty, so essentially, all of the terms are the same with LBA forty ones.
Very good, so, exciting from the same point, I guess, that probably not gonna see a lot of the winter coming around, but come spring, you'll probably see a lot of changes happening downtown, which would be awesome.
Thank you, any other questions or comments? So, like approve?
Well, so we have here A through M, I'm gonna read each of these out loud for the record, and then we'll do them all as one group, but if any councilor wants to pull any of these out and vote on them separately, we can sure do that. We just wanna, we had a discussion of LBA forty, just wanna make sure so that you don't feel pressured to have to vote for one you may not support. So, let me read these real quick, A is Cash Investments LLC, one thirty-nine North Sixth Street, fifty thousand dollars. We have B, Melissa Briggs Allure, five twenty-six Seward Street, fifty thousand dollars. C, Josh Del Camp Green Futures Properties LLC, one thirty-two South Fifth Street, fifty thousand dollars. D, Kenneth Schmiding, one forty-three South Sixth Street, two thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars and fifty cents. E, Seward LLC, six oh six Seward Street, twenty thousand four hundred fifty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents. F, Joe Hoekstein, Hoekstein Holdings LLC, five twenty-two Seward Street, ten thousand seven hundred thirty-two dollars and forty-three cents. G, Kirby Roth, six hundred Seward Street, thirteen thousand four hundred seventy-eight dollars and three cents. H, Cosmic Cow Incorporated, the Udder Store, six thirty-six Seward Street, twenty-two thousand dollars. I, Susan Gilgorevich, In Motion Fitness LLC, six forty-eight Seward Street, three thousand four hundred eighty dollars. J, Josh Del Camp Green Futures Properties LLC, one fifty-six South Fifth Street, fifty thousand dollars. K, Scott Denzalagi, three ten North Fifth Street, four thousand four hundred ninety dollars. L, Cash five ten LLC, six hundred, six forty, Seward Street, seventeen thousand two hundred fifty dollars. And M, et cetera, five oh four, Seward Street, twelve thousand two hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty cents. Unless someone would like to remove one of these and vote them separately, or someone like to make a motion?
Move to approve A through M.
Motion in a second, as we mean for the discussion, seeing none, please register your votes, please play the votes.
What are you, kind of looking back, Chris, no more singing, hands, motion.
I got a question about the Royal Smart Building, they were over tax and financing a month ago, and they didn't have a quorum, is that still, are they still doing that, or?
You mean the building at Oslon's, eh?
Right.
They are not, they withdrew.
They withdrew the tax and financing part of it, okay.
And so before we. Or it's on hold at this point, I mean, they're not moving forward at this point.
So before we do the strategy sessions, do you want to report, number nineteen?
I just wanna add this to, Amanda, all, whatever you need to help you out as you write, cause that's a lot of stuff, but we have all that stuff there and I can help you, I know you're gonna need that, so. That'd be hard to write all that down, yeah, I'll do my administrative report here real quick.
And then we'll do some upcoming events, and then we can go into our strategy session.
The big one we're working on, as I noted before, is we've been going budget crazy over the last few weeks, and so we'll have our work session next Tuesday, seven PM here. And then to our public hearing on September fourth, as you know, the East Seward Street project, I don't know, they got started today yet even. With the weather that came in, we were anticipating starting on Monday, we had barricades and stuff down there, but that rain just kinda knocked us off, but we'll start the East Seward Street project and start doing that concrete replacement. So look to that to be closed for four to six weeks.
Where are they looking to go from?
Um.
From the bridge to the dog park?
Yeah.
It's the dog park, right?
I think it's the dog park, and they'll have some levels of access, I think the dog park for the most part will be accessible until like the last moment. But just look to that to be going on, so people have patience or reroute themselves trying to get into town if they're using East Seward Street. Any other big ones, just noting, you know, fall stuff's going on, so we got online registrations again, we got full online registration for youth sports, a number of those going on this fall. Let's see, what?
Pool is closed.
And the pool is closed, unfortunately, we're not able to have the doggy dip, we apologize, but we gotta get that thing drained out on Monday, so. We did not do the doggy dip on Sunday due to the weather. I can answer any other questions you have, it's kinda all laid out there, so.
Any questions or comments on the received material report?
How much was the Tesla?
Don't know off the top of my head, I can get that for you.
Yeah, was that a budgeted?
Yes, that was a budget item, so, it's the buildup for putting in a whole new well, so this is just continuing, it's still in the process.
Any other questions or comments on the report, otherwise we entertain a motion to accept. We have a motion in a second, please register your votes, please play the votes.
And we're just going to do the future requests for, yeah, new upcoming events, so any future requests for agenda items at this time? If not, then Jonathan, do you wanna tell us some upcoming events?
Yes, thank you, man. We have Business After Hours, Thursday, September thirteenth, at Green Place, starting at four thirty, which is just right straight there, and of course. And of course, um, Ignite the Flight is on Saturday, uh, September fifteenth, at the Seward Municipal Airport, so we encourage you to consider, uh, participating in those upcoming events, thank you.
Thank you. Then we'll jump back to, uh, sixteen, the strategy session with city administrator, I'm sorry, city attorney to provide negotiation guidance concerning real estate interests at the Commercial Rail Campus Development Area.
Clarification, uh, is the rail campus, are we meeting Jonathan or not?
Yes, Jonathan and myself.
I move that city council go into closed session with the mayor and the city attorney for the protection of the public interest and to provide negotiating guidance to the city attorney concerning the real estate interests at the Commercial Rail Campus Development Area, and potential acquisition of real estate interest for the city sewer volunteer fire department. I forgot to include Jonathan and Jake also.
Wait, are we doing, uh?
Now, now we combine both items sixteen and seventeen in one.
Okay.
I think we can do that.
And, uh, and who else is in this one, Chris?
Mayor, city attorney.
Jonathan?
Jonathan and the city administrator.
Is your second?
Second.
Please register your votes, please play the votes.
Welcome back, Chris, no more singing, watch it, hands, motion.
We didn't set a time on that.
It's not critical, come back in thirty minutes.
I agree, it was stated.
I know.
So you wanna?
I don't see thirty minutes?
Thirty minutes. And Ellen?
Except for-
Okay. Just register your votes again, and then just play the votes, please, thank you.
May you favor, would you amend, welcome back, Chris, no more singing, watch it.
Okay, the council is voted to go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and the limited purpose of providing negotiating guidance for the city attorney regarding real estate interests at the Commercial Rail Campus Development Area and the potential acquisition of real estate interest for the city sewer volunteer fire department, not to exceed thirty minutes.
Mayor? I just note, there will be no action tonight.
Yep, no action today.